7:02, we'll call this meeting of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission to order. This meeting is being held as a virtual meeting, as allowed by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extending certain provisions of the meeting law until March 31st, 2025. Meeting materials can be accessed at BerkshirePlanning.org for the meeting. And Kate, if you will call the roll, please.
Okay. Our first roll call, I call each of the towns in alphabetical order. And if the delegates present, please say your full name and then the alternate, and we will just run through all 32 of us. Adams. Alford. Beckett. Cheshire.
Peter Traub, delegate.
Clarksburg. Dalton. Egremont.
Mary McGurn, delegate.
Florida. Great Barrington.
We didn't hear you, Malcolm, for some reason. Doesn't look like you're muted, but.
Great Barrington. Malcolm Fick is here, is present. Hancock. Hensdale. Lanesboro.
Leanne Younger, delegate.
Lennox.
Mark Smith, delegate.
New Marlborough. North Adams. Otis. Sandusfield. Savoy. Stockbridge.
Christine Rasmussen, alternate.
Haringham. Washington.
Don Gagnon, delegate.
West Stockbridge. Williamstown.
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Windsor.
Douglas McNally, delegate.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we do, Malcolm.
I have no idea what I'm doing. I just got a new microphone and camera, so. Trial and run here, I thought I had it all.
Technology's great when it works.
There we go. The adventure continues. Hey, thank you, Kate. The next order is a vote to approve the minutes of January 16th, 2024.
That should be 2025, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm reading what's written.
Yes, I know. It's an error on the agenda.
So we'll have a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move. Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Second, Sheila.
Hey, does anybody have any comments or corrections? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote.
I will continue alphabetical by town first names. Peter.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Leanne.
Yes.
Mark.
Abstain, I did not attend that meeting.
All righty. Sheila.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Malcolm.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Christine. Dawn.
Yes.
Roger.
Abstain.
Doug.
Yes.
I hope that we lost you again, Malcolm.
Yeah, no.
You're kind of fading in and out, and we're hearing a lot of static. There you are, for a second.
Whatever, remote from your computer, is it plugged in?
All right. All right.
Okay, well, I think until you get that fixed, Malcolm, we're gonna have to deal with something during the meeting. And John is not here. Sheila, you are another officer. Would you be willing to chair the meeting, I guess?
I'd be happy to. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so let me just get to it. Okay.
Be going after a solution that will help him take back over.
Go quickly, Malcolm. All right, under 2, we have comments from Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and all of the delegates. Anyone have any comments? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 3, comments from the public. Are there any members of the public here who wish to be heard? Seeing none. We will move on to item number 4, presentation and discussion of executive committee actions.
Yeah, so again, these are just actions that the executive committee took over the last two meetings. They're presented just basically for your information, or if you have any questions or comments, I can explain those.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, moving on. About presentation and discussion about the Building for Tomorrow report, as prepared by the Unlocking Housing Production Commission.
So, as you know, this administration has made an emphasis on housing in her and a companion piece to that was a report about, you know, dealing with some of the barriers for housing development. Unlocking Housing Production Commission, and one of my colleagues from the Region Planning Agency, from the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, Jenny Rate, was on that commission, and she has graciously offered to talk about the work of that commission, as well as the report. So Jenny, thank you for being here tonight.
Great, thank you, Tom. I appreciate the introduction, and great to see all of you. As Tom noted, I'm Jenny Rate, I'm the Executive Director of Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, where the Regional Planning Agency based in Lowell, and we serve nine communities. I personally, just to give you a little bit about me, I have about 30 years of planning and housing and community development experience, working across the Commonwealth for both local governments, as well as regional planning agencies. So have a lot of experience working on housing policy as well at the state level and nationally. And so I served on this commission, which was the Unlocking Housing Production Commission. It emerged at the time of the Affordable Homes Act being filed, which is basically the housing bond bill, multi-billion dollar housing bond bill, too, which primarily funds various affordable housing types of programs that help to create new housing. But it also came with a number of different policy actions, as well as the creation of different commissions. And one of those commissions was the one that I served on, as well as the sort of companion to this commission, the Housing Advisory Council. The Housing Advisory Council was tasked with developing the state housing plan, which also was released prior to this Unlocking Housing Production Commission report, called Building for Tomorrow. And essentially, just the first one, the statewide housing plan, which is the first time that the state has actually had a housing plan in decades, sets forth, you know, an understanding of some of the housing needs across the state, the pent-up for demand, and also talks about sort of the types of, you know, generally speaking, where growth might be happening over the course of a period of time. And the next step in that Housing Advisory Council process is actually developing a set of tools and information that will help communities across the Commonwealth to better understand how they can help to advance those goals. My commission was specifically tasked with just what exactly are the barriers to actually developing anything, regardless of targets or goals, and how can we work to address those issues? This was a pretty cross-cutting type of commission, where there were people who have a lot of development experience, people who have experience with affordable housing, people who work for various state agencies, and people who represent trades and labor, and folks who represent the commercial and industrial businesses as well. So it was a very cross-cutting kind of group of people, and then also some, you know, folks who are very, you know, housing advocacy oriented, and the mayor of East Hampton, and also we had participation by the mayor of Amesbury, and then I served. We also had some close collaboration with Massachusetts Municipal Association, and along the way, we also brought in various experts and, you know, sort of stakeholders to test some of the things that we were thinking about, and also to kind of gain deeper insights into each one of the areas that we chose to focus on. And so, you know, this was basically a year-long effort, maybe a little bit more, it's hard to say. We were a very, very dedicated group of people. According to the governor, we put in many, many more hours than she ever anticipated. So this is the result of a lot of really, really hard thinking about a probably what you, in the Berkshire region, would know to be a very difficult topic to address, and one that brings up a lot of other types of challenges. We didn't address the types of challenges that are necessarily everything that you all individually, as folks representing mostly government agencies, might deal with day-to-day. We also dealt with things that also address the private sector, and state agencies even, like state policies and state fund. Let's see, we met 2 to 4 times per month, and ultimately, we developed, we had four different subcommittees, that's how we split ourselves up in terms of dividing up the work and the research. I was the co-chair of the Land Use and Zoning Subcommittee, and that's where a lot of my expertise happens to be in. But I also was a member of the committee that worked on statewide planning types of goals, and figuring out how to, again, unlock some of those issues. There were two other groups that we had going on. One was based around regulations, codes, and permitting, and then the fourth one was economic incentives and workforce development. And so the 50 recommendations follow basically these throughways, these pathways, on those four topical areas. And I don't know, Tom, have you, did you share the report? I'm sorry, I don't have like a formal, this is me making a presentation, but not, I don't have a PowerPoint or anything like that for you.
I shared the link to the report, and I shared the executive summary for the handout for the meeting.
Okay, great. So when we thought about the sort of, you know, what we were tasked with was obviously something that I think the governor would like to act upon rather, you know, with, you know, in, as quickly as she can, right, to get to some of these statewide housing goals. But the commission was full of people who have a lot of experience, know how long it takes to address some of the issues. And when we were tasked with looking at the recommendations, we built it around a framework of sort of recommendations that have multiple implementation pathways, if you know what I mean. So some of them are certainly about local-level issues, but then others, as I mentioned, are state and even beyond. But they fall into three categories, administrative, regulatory, and legislative. And I would say that, you know, in my particular subcommittee, overarchingly, the majority of our recommendations are really legislative. So they are matters in which, in land use and zoning, a lot of these recommendations would require state-level legislative action, and then in one case, regulatory reforms. Other recommendation areas, for example, in economic incentives and workforce development, has had a number of items that actually were fairly administrative in nature, but also, you know, intertwined with regulatory issues and legislative matters. And we found that again and again, a lot of the issues that are barriers to housing production were very intertwined. It wasn't, there's no simple, I'm sure you know this, there's not a simple solution here. I wish that after a year worth of work and 2 to 4 meetings a month, I could tell you that I came up with some great ideas that will immediately solve our housing problems, but it is a collective action sort of thing. And I know that it looks different in terms of how it's carried out across the entire Commonwealth. Where I work is different than where you're all working on your efforts, and where I live looks different as well. I live in Brookline. Everybody experiences these issues differently at the local level. These were recommendations that are mostly geared towards the state making changes. So just a little bit of a, I'm gonna quickly go through a preview of each one of those four kind of pillar or topical areas, and then I think maybe at the end, Tom, I'll just take any questions. Okay. So under the category or, you know, sort of the issue area around economic incentives and workforce development. In this particular one, we talked, we basically came up with four big kind of topical area recommendations, and then there's a series of recommendations, like sub-recommendations beneath them. The first one is around modular housing, and this one is mostly administrative in nature, but also would have to address a lot of regulatory issues, and even some issues at the legislative level. And the idea in summary is to create a working group of modular stakeholders to enable and establish a thriving modular construction ecosystem across the Commonwealth. The second one is around a state sales tax credit. This would require legislative action, and it included a recommendation about providing a state sales tax credit for materials for qualifying affordable housing developers. It's just one more pathway to lowering the price of development. The third, one of the big-picture recommendations from that particular pillar, is around state-funded infrastructure. And the idea here in this recommendation is to leverage state-funded infrastructure, for example, water, or sewer, or stormwater connectivity, those types of infrastructure, those investments, to both ease and subsidize the costs of private development, and also to explore expansions of connections to existing water or wastewater infrastructure systems. And this mostly is applicable, I believe, to greater Boston region, but to the Mass Water Resource Authority. But I know that it has an impact, however, on western Massachusetts when talking about that particular topic. So that's kind of just a sort of a big-picture overview. I'm not gonna get, if I had time for 50 recommendations to review with you, I would be delighted to do that. And I wanted to just tell you that if I don't answer all of your questions this evening, Tom, please feel free to distribute my personal information, and anybody is welcome to get in touch with me. I'm happy to talk with you or follow up if you have any other questions. Under the land use and zoning category, I would say, again, nearly all of these items require legislative action, as in changes to the State Zoning Act, Zoning Enabling Act, 40A. The first of them is about eliminating parking minimums. And this recommendation is based around removing requirements that developments have to include a set number of parking spaces, and also requiring municipalities to then, if they abide by this rule, to also establish transportation demand management requirements. These are basically rules that say, well, if you don't have access to a car or parking for your vehicle, then you have to provide other alternatives to people who live in some sort of housing. It doesn't say that there's no parking at all, it just says that you can't require specific minimum numbers of parking, either by bedroom, or by unit type, or any of the above. The second one is just generally speaking, some reforms to 40A. And that includes adding what is called the zoning purpose, as in literally, what is the purpose of zoning? Back into 40A, it actually was removed from 40A when statewide enabling zoning happened in 1975. And it's now in sort of a special chapter that one would have to hire an attorney to research and identify, which of course, we had access to at our commission level, but which is kind of the key ingredient to understanding why you zone, and what is the purpose of zoning, and how it links back to, you know, perhaps local planning initiatives. So adding the zoning purpose back into 40A, and creating guidelines to require communities to adopt local zoning in alignment with a master planning process. Right now, master planning is also not required. It's something that, of course, many communities do, and they should do. And there are certainly procedural things in terms of how the master plans are adopted and filed, but they are not required. So this creates sort of a nexus between zoning and planning and the purpose, and also to address some of the inefficiencies with the better appeals process. Right now, there's a missile, there's, there needs to be a realignment, realignment of both the recently passed in 2021 Economic Development Bond Bill, had specific issues around changes to the appeals process versus what it is today. So again, legislative issue right there. The third one is about expanding multifamily housing options. I know this is not an issue that your communities have to address around MBTA communities, but it is probably the primary conversation in many, the 177 communities in the eastern part of the state. But with that in mind, what we, the commission felt that there should be other mechanisms to encourage by-right housing creation across the Commonwealth. So this recommendation gets to that expansion of multifamily options. And it's, the summary of it is that there would be 2 units by right on all residential lots, with 4 units by right when that lot is served by municipal water or sewer, and also to require municipalities to create some sort of multifamily district. There's no, there's nothing further about this one, other than making sure that all of our communities are participating in housing creation. Additionally, other zoning recommendations included changes to minimum lot sizes, meaning the elimination of minimum residential lot sizes, which would allow for things like lot mergers and lot splits. There is an allowance for lot mergers right now, but it is extremely narrowly based on certain type of housing creation. This would open that up for all types of housing creation, except, in all cases, related to environmentally sensitive areas. And then the last two are about 40B and 40R. We talked quite a deal at the commission level about 40B reforms, and also 40R reforms. For the 40R reforms, and I don't know how many districts you have in the Berkshire region off the top of my head, but I bet you do, and they might be very small. And part of the reason why there's not a lot of 40R districts, even though the law has been on the books since 2004, is that it's still not quite there in terms of the right incentives and the right opportunities. So one of our recommendations is to scale affordability requirements to actual density that builders can create, and that communities sometimes actually want, and to eliminate the zoning incentive payment, and rather, instead of that, to scale up the bonus payments, which actually gets the housing built. You can get a zoning incentive payment and not build any housing. We want to see housing built. So those are the 40R reforms. Those would be regulatory, that's the only one that actually would be a regulatory potential change. And then the last one is 40B, and I'm sure, you know, again, if you've dealt with comprehensive permits, there's a lot to unpack there. We have a sort of a narrow version of our 40B recommendations, which includes expediting the appeals process and limiting the threshold for appeals. The whole point of the comprehensive permit is, in fact, to expedite permitting, and of course, to override any local zoning. But in reality, and in practice, 40B actually is still almost as lengthy a process as going through a special permitting process, or other, other, other types of processes that you might have at the local level. And part of that is because of appeals. So that's, that's one side of it. The other side is more frequent counting of the housing stock. Right now, you have to do a decennial count, and that's very complicated, because sometimes it doesn't actually happen on the decade, and things change, market shift. And then last thing is allowing for technical assistance to function as a subsidy incentive for communities that have already gone above and beyond the 10% minimum of affordable housing, deed-restricted affordable housing units. There's a much bigger 40B recommendation in the report, but there's other, there's a few other, like, big, really, really bold kind of actions, and one of them is around 40B. Those are sort of the ones that we, as a commission, said, these are ideas, they certainly would unlock production, but we don't recommend them happening right now. If none of these other recommendations work, maybe you turn to some other ideas, and here's a few of the ones that we have right now. So those are all of the recommendations around land use and zoning. The next thing is about regulations, and the sort of permitting process and codes. This one is a little more to unbundle here, but everything from local environmental regulations, especially in the cases where local communities are exceeding exceeding or more stringent than state standards, particularly around DEP, wastewater and water challenges, and that's that expanding the IA program, changing the formula for calcul- a greater ability to have groundwater mounding. We also talked about MEPA, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act review process, which has, which newly introduced some requirements that have become barriers in the process around how to address new development that may be adjacent to or located in an environmental justice community, where it now requires a full-fledged environmental impact report, as opposed to the ENF, the ENF process that used to be allowed. The next one is around energy code reforms. Our commission identified about 13 different state types of policies and codes around energy reform, that are all actually somewhat in conflict with one another, multi-layered, and actually end up costing not only communities more money, but developers more money to build any housing. So expanding the financial incentives for both compliance with that, as well as pursuing ongoing technical revisions, creating an energy code appeals board and process, and expanding the technical assistance that's allowed, and also creating a one-year concurrency period for any new codes that are introduced. Right now, it's been just a, it's like been a kind of a fire hose of great ideas around climate resiliency and change, but some of them are coming at us so quickly that they actually intervene, get in the way of newly permitted development, or development that hasn't even been permitted yet, but is under review and has already been designed, which adds to the cost and creation of new housing. Next thing is building code reforms, meaning primarily addressing how you can renovate an existing building, and also address accessibility, but in a more fair standard and way that should be applied particularly in areas where it's difficult to develop, and also allowing a single stair up to six stories, and adding more housing representation to, and clarifying the role of the statewide building board, essentially. Considering housing production goals by the statewide building board as well, adding more of that representation, and also moving towards performance-based standards for performance. and also moving towards performance-based standards for codes. And then lastly, the creation of potentially a housing impact statement requiring that any housing production impact statement for new regulatory or code changes occurs so that we understand when a new code is being proposed by the state and potentially adopted. We understand the impact that will, it will have on the cost of housing. So the last area was about statewide planning and coordination. As I mentioned, I also served on the subcommittee, wasn't one of the co-chairs, but was just simply a member. And this one, I don't know how many of you go back in time in your history of, of working in your regional planning district or planning in general, but you may remember many, many moons ago, there was an office of state planning. So our commission had a number of people serving on it who had a similar memory, had a positive experience of that. And we also had the opportunity in this particular subcommittee to talk with former secretaries of housing and economic development for the past, basically since the King administration. So really kind of a very educational and determined that, and so a lot of these recommendations came from those conversations, determining that an office of statewide planning would be very helpful to both coordinate data gathering and analysis and also help with development-related state policy. And to be able to undertake what we would consider to be more proactive planning across all development-related secretariats. There have been different versions of this with different governors since King, which is when the state planning office used to exist. But, you know, we're, we're talking about just bringing that back. We also recommended annual municipal data reporting. We know how challenging it is to both collect and gather data from municipalities and also have a standard form or format for doing that, but establishing a standard for annual reporting of local data on all housing development proposals and what actions cities and towns have taken to approve, deny, or modify them. Right now, a lot of the states sort of zoning changes that have been discussed or talked about, like MBTA communities, the accessory dwelling, protected use accessory dwelling units, they actually have state reporting requirements tied to them now. And I think going forward, that will be the standard, but bringing, bringing other things up to that same standard as we move forward so that we have a good sense of what is the picture of production. So we're not, you know, speculating or wondering about it, but actually have some good, strong data and insights. And then empowering municipal housing production by aligning all municipal transportation and education, education funding with housing investments. And that would mean also an expansion of technical assistance and board training offerings for municipalities. We, you may already receive some training through, you know, you, you receive assistance potentially through the district local technical assistance program, Massachusetts Housing Partnership, Citizens Housing and Planning Association. There's a lot of other groups that also provide technical assistance around housing production, but to try to gain some greater alignment. Also, there's the Citizen Planners Training Collaborative, which had its conference this past weekend. But really expanding upon that and opening it up and making it a requirement also for land use and zoning boards and other permitting bodies to have, to be trained in order to make local decisions. Lastly, and this is in that category of things not to touch unless things change, don't change rather, which is actually an expansion of the authorities of regional planning agencies. And that would allow us, if this happened, would allow regional planning agencies to have more of an ability to review local zoning proposals, weigh in on them and potentially, you know, help to make decisions in order to move development forward that may be regionally prioritized or something else. So with all of that, oh, there was a, the, the, the other one that was sort of in that category of do not touch was larger scale infrastructure expansion, like that really big picture infrastructure, which is very, is incredibly complicated. And also brings up a lot of other, is actually brings up federal apparently legal issues related to the intertidal basin law and requirements that we have through the Commonwealth. So in conclusion, the final report is, you know, really a very bold, I would say, overarching, definitely deals with a lot of legislative action. But it also is a really flexible menu. It's not meant to be done at all at once, but it's individually, even one by one, a lot of these things could help to substantively change the trajectory around housing production in the Commonwealth. The commission knows that a lot more, you know, sort of socialization of the recommendations is necessary. So I appreciate this opportunity to talk with you, maybe for you to share this report with your boards or communities or both. And to also just note that, you know, if you haven't also read the companion state housing plan, I would encourage you to do that as well. And I think with that, I'm very happy to answer any questions. And if I didn't cover something that you were hoping I would talk more about, I'm happy to dive into that as well. I don't know that we have the time right now, but happy to entertain whatever you would like, Tom.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We wait long enough, somebody will have a question.
Doug has a question.
Thank you, Doug.
Just, just, I, I'm very pleased to hear this. A couple of observations about how this would impact the Berkshires. Berkshires are a little different than Brooklyn or Manhattan where I grew up, or even Boston, but we have a dichotomy. We have the urban centers and we have a lot of urban, very rural areas. One of the things that bothers me is that Adams, North Adams, Pittsfield, some extent, Great Barrington have a lot of decrepit housing that could be renewed. And I was really pleased to hear that there's, there's elements of this plan that would address that, you know, letting, letting housing just deteriorate to the point it's uninhabitable and then having people not being, it's a problem. But the flip side of that is the rural problem. The town of Windsor, I, I live in the town of Windsor. You don't know us, but we have under 900 people in the town. Everything is septic and wells. And there is some interest in the town in eventually develops, developing some cluster housing, but the challenge to the town is that they, creating the infrastructure that would allow that, very expensive. And I know you, you said that there was something in here where you could fund the creation of possibly, you know, multifamily septic systems or, you know, cluster housing with shared wells. So I, I think that's something, if, if we're going to address this in the Berkshires, we, we have to look at how that would impact us. Do you see those two as possible results of, of this initiative?
First of all, thank you for these comments and these insights. And I, I don't know Windsor, but I want to now. But, but I would say that yes, that is the intention, you know, if there were, if that could be an outcome, what you just described. I will also note that actually the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has been investigating other sort of mechanisms to fund water and sewer and wastewater infrastructure, including like regional fee structures and like sort of other, they're exploring a bunch of different possibilities. So I think between this report and its recommendations, the statewide housing plan and other things that are emerging, we might see some other types of, you know, smaller scale interventions or solutions to the, the kinds of problems that you've just raised.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's next? Roger?
Well, I guess somewhat related to Doug's point, or at least inspired by it, there are many areas in this area, in this region that would be quite suitable for housing as no real environmental limitations. But the availability of public transit is almost nil or is nil in lots and lots of areas. And that, you know, really has the effect of reducing accessibility and thus the desirability of these places. So I'm wondering whether your commission gave any thought to trying to improve mass transit as a way to improve housing.
We didn't specifically ask the MBTA to expand, but I'm positive that every single person on that commission would explore, certainly support the expansion of transit and regional transit authorities and the funding and the resources that's needed to sustain that, right? I think that's the trickiest question that the Commonwealth has to really provide an answer to. And you know, while the millionaire's tax, so to speak, provides a, you know, a little bit of a boost to regional transit authorities. And we have a brand new, you know, you know, very, very well-funded potentially transportation bond bill that will, you know, also expand some opportunities. I think the, the issue that you're talking about is one that needs still a little bit more attention. And I don't have the answer to that. The commission that I was on was not working on particularly that challenge. I think what I would say though, is that some of this stuff, first of all, these are like what we need to do in order to build more housing. Doesn't say that it's, it looks exactly the same everywhere. It's exactly this amount or that amount. There's no, there's not a requirement like that. It's just what do we need to do to get, get across this, this barrier to, in order to produce these opportunities? So whatever it looks like in your community or the communities that you're describing, it might look different. It's going to look different. And where I live in Brookline and where I look, work in Lowell and frankly in Dunstable, which is very rural community with absolutely no transit whatsoever. And I think that it's a little bit of a reimagining perhaps of how we do housing creation and development across the Commonwealth, including in places like you just described. We might just have to imagine things a little bit differently and maybe even create more cottage-style housing and, you know, sort of more density in specific locations and then create transportation access for, you know, those developments as they emerge and populate over time. These are big picture goals that we are recommending, you know, move forward with. So again, it's, it's sort of, it's a menu of things and over time. And whenever we can develop in a community like the one that you've described, I think it will look very particular to your community. There's nothing, we didn't prescribe a certain, certain type of development and we did not prescribe specific types of transportation solutions.
Christine?
Thank you. This was a fascinating report. And I used to live in Gloucester, so I can see the difference. It could really benefit in more metro area. But living out here in a town that is not really aware of a lot of the opportunities and has some very strict present zoning requirements, large lots, et cetera. I wonder about how this report gets rolled out so that people don't just react to, oh my gosh, the state is coming in and they're going to take away some of our bundle of rights that are so important to land use out here. And then it becomes more difficult to move the issue forward in my experience. So I was wondering if there's been some thought of massaging, how the information goes out so it's a positive for the more rural parts of the state where we value a different concept in land use.
I think that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities is thinking a lot about that. And as they develop those recommendations, the more, the, the more detailed to like kind of the toolkit that goes with the house, the statewide housing plan. I think that's exactly what they're going to be thinking about. There's also the, you know, whether it's going to have some revel, you know, a big revelation of new ideas around seasonal communities. There's, you know, very, there's a variety of other like committees and commissions that have been working on specific topical issues. I know there was also a rural housing commission that also devised a number of recommendations or all of those things are sort of coming together right now. And I think the state is trying to be considerate and certainly thoughtful and practical about the best way to address them in different regions across the state. I, I, I guess I'd say like one other, one other observation or point, and I, I, I don't think it will be surprising. The state housing plan, it showed a map of where new growth might occur and the Berkshire region and Western Mass was not nearly as growth oriented as the rest of the Commonwealth. And I think that what, I think what my observation is, is that the administration wants to find ways to solve this problem with people in Western Massachusetts to figure out what will work, what's right, so that you can not only keep your current population there, but grow your population and continue to grow your economy. Think that's, that's what they care about. I know that it has to be well crafted and done correctly. And I think you're right that people react to, you know, specific pieces of these recommendations. I mean, the headline in the Globe was we were ending single-family zoning. I'm aware of that, but, but, you know, there's like 49 other recommendations in there. So that's what people focus on, right? But I think, you know, with your help perhaps and what you're hearing tonight, and if you want to further this conversation with, within your communities, I think that's the way that we, we reimagine the conversation a little bit. And we say that that's, certainly that's one piece of it, but it is, there's 49 other pieces too.
And I think your work has been really fascinating, dedicated, and it's great. We have forward-thinking people out there to challenge us. So thank you for all the time you obviously put in because I know it's a thankless job.
Well, you're welcome. I feel thanked. So, thank you.
Doug, do you have another?
I just, just a follow-up on Roger's comment. We, regional planning is involved in a, a, a study of looking at micro-transit and everything. I, I think they really need to look at that issue about rural transportation. I, 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 we got here and even I, I'm on the BRTA board and they have a nice, you know, fixed route thing that serves the urban areas, if you want to get from one urban area to other urban area, but if you live in a rural area, you're, you're on your own. And I think the state needs, if they want to expand housing and they want to take advantage of the Berkshires and the Pioneer Valley having the capacity. And now that, and, and I will say this, now that broadband is, is becoming, you know, pervasive throughout the area, which was a, a big hindrance before, the, the, the big, the big hindrance right now is, is, is that if, if you don't have a car, you can't live here.
I can imagine that being a very big barrier. Or, you know, if you don't have a car and you can't afford to get a car, you know, you're dependent upon somebody else driving you, or you're dependent upon a very, you know, poorly constructed and potentially poorly operating regional transit system or some other, you know, transportation, like privatized system. So there's, yeah, there's very limited options in certain places across the Commonwealth. That's a, I would say that's a very big issue. I completely.
You mentioned the, the initiative of the governor, where she pretty much put 90% of the new money into bailing out MBTA and froze level funded the RTAs, which is counterproductive to what you're trying to do, which is, you know, get, get people living in other areas. So I, I think that you need to fund rural transportation and not spend all of our money on Boston commuting transportation.
Very, very good points.
Doug, I think you're right on, but I don't think Ginny's going to be able to solve that problem.
No, no, I just, I share that with anybody who might have ear of anybody.
Yes.
It's not your thing to handle, but if you ever get a chance to whisper in the ear, please do.
Well, I, I will say the, the report does have like a lot of other components to it that I would. that I would encourage you, you know, again, if you get to sit down and read through the report, great. If you don't, I also totally understand, you probably have a lot of other things to read. But the report does lay out like sort of all of the, and includes transportation as one of the barriers. And, you know, lays out the housing problem and the, the sort of the system that we've created here in the state. And gives you, you know, sort of the, I would say the armor of the, the facts and the data and the patterns that we've created, which is what led to the recommendations. I didn't talk about any of that. I just jumped right into the recommendations and why, you know, how we kind of constructed them. But if you want to read about that background and that framing, it does certainly talk about transportation as being a barrier. It's just that we didn't focus on that recommendation, but I, I completely understand what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Uh, Roger?
Uh, I'd just like to add that it's not only not being able to afford a car. There are lots of people who can afford a car, who can afford two, three cars, but they're elderly. They can't drive or they shouldn't be driving. There are people who are disabled or have physical handicaps. There are young people, teenagers, who are not old enough to be a licensed driver, but they would like to move around a little bit. And so it's just, it's not simply a matter of affordability. It's just a small detail.
No, appreciate that. Car ownership is not for everybody and nor should it be sometimes.
Okay.
Malcolm, I have a question if I might. So there, some of these, uh, recommendations were legislative in nature. Has any legislation been filed that would address these?
Nothing at this time. No. No.
So we're looking downstream.
What's that?
We're looking downstream.
Yeah, it's downstream. I mean, uh, the, um, abundant housing Massachusetts, actually, which is a, a separate, uh, statewide nonprofit advocacy organization. One of their members was on the commission and their agency did file a number of bills and some of them mirror exactly what's in the land use and zoning, uh, section of the plan. But there's nothing that's been filed by the governor herself. So we'll see what happens next.
Anyone else have any final questions, comments? Well, thank you for your time and thank you for your, it was wonderful.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Anytime.
I want to say, I want to say thank you as well. Jenny was, you were at a day-long, what, economic development conference all day today too, right? So she's doing double duty here. So thank you.
Happy to help. Anytime. Take care, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Hey, uh, and Sheila, thank you for filling in for me. I am terribly sorry about the technical glitch, but I'm now, I'm on my, on my old computer now, so.
I was happy to do it, Malcolm. Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next, uh, order of business for us, uh, was going to be the vote to have the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, um, uh, adopt a policy that would allow us to have, uh, um, uh, remote participation in meetings after the, um, current, uh, extension of the open meeting law, um, uh, expired. Um, I guess, Tom, my question is if this, if in one likely event that this did fall through, would the executive committee then act on it or would we have to wait for the next commission to act on it?
I think, I think it has to be the commission on this vote.
Uh, then I, I would suggest we go ahead with it because the, you know, what we're considering here, uh, would be rescinded as soon as Governor Healy signs it. But, uh, I would, uh, I would suggest that we, uh, just vote on this just to make sure that we have our geese crossed and our eyes dotted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, it took a fair amount of effort to work with my counsel to come up with this motion. So I don't want to see that wasted.
So, um, the, the item here is a vote to have, uh, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission allow remote participation in accordance with the requirements of 940 CMR 29.10, applicable to all subsequent meetings of the commissioners committees, but such adoption shall be deemed rescinded upon passage by the legislature of remote participation upon terms equal to or expansive than those permitted under section 20 of chapter 20, acts of 2021. And that would be the language of the motion, right?
Right, right.
Anyone, anybody want to move that?
I'll move that.
Thank you, Doug.
Second.
Thanks, Roger. Uh, any discussion? So let's take a vote on this. Okay?
Alrighty. Um, again, by town, alphabetical by town. Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mal- uh, Malcolm?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Williamstown delegate is present. True Samantha?
Yes, yes, I'm present and yes, on the motion.
Thank you. Doug?
Yes.
I got everybody, right?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next order of business is a presentation and discussion of the Massachusetts vacant storefront program. Um, Tom, you want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll introduce it a little bit. Uh, again, this is something that I think I talked about maybe at the executive committee. But this program has been around for, uh, a number of years, uh, which really provides, you know, uh, tax incentives to make sure that vacant storefront properties are, are used. Uh, but there were many limitations prior to these, uh, changes. And I think this year, yeah, it's going to be much, uh, there's a wider applicability potential for some of our smaller towns. So Laura is going to run through the, um, you know, some of the changes, how the program works briefly, some of the changes, uh, to it.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Um, I am going to share my screen and I also just want to mention that page nine of your meeting packet for today has the guidelines for, uh, the revised vacant storefront program. And please let me know if you're seeing PowerPoint slides.
We are, but we're seeing the notes too, or the, or the side thing.
Okay, I'll try and make it bigger by actually showing the slideshow then. Okay.
Yeah, that's better.
How's that? Okay. I'm reading it on a different monitor, so excuse me if I'm looking away from you. Um, the, so as Tom mentioned, this is really about helping municipalities in their efforts to revitalize downtowns and commercial areas. And, um, it is, uh, significantly streamlined from the previous version of the program. And it allows municipalities to apply for refundable tax credits, um, on behalf of businesses that would move into vacant spaces. All municipal, all, all municipalities in Massachusetts are eligible. And, um, that is more meaningful now than it was in the past because, um, of some of the changes that they have made. So what's new, there are several elements that are new. The first is that this is being run through the One Stop for Growth, um, meaning that it's on the same grant cycle as many, many other programs are now. Um, and we'll get into some of the timeframes of that in a little bit, but I'm sure you're all getting more and more familiar each year with One Stop. And this is now part of that whole, um, portal. Um, an improvement to the program is that a vacant, a vacancy, um, qualifies after only six months. And I believe in the past it had, there was a minimum of 12 months for the space to, um, needed to be vacant before it was qualifying. And municipalities are now eligible for up to 50,000 in refundable tax credits. Um, there's not really a lot of fine-tuned guidance about how you might divvy up that maximum of 50,000, but we'll get into how that might look, um, in a couple of slides. One of the things that I think is most beneficial for, um, communities in the Berkshires is that there's no longer a requirement to establish a vacant storefront district. Um, in the past, this was very focused on communities that had, uh, condensed and, um, well-built out, uh, downtown areas. And there's no longer a need to define a specific, um, district. It takes that whole layer of bureaucracy of applying away. And it also means that if your community has commercial spaces, um, outside of the downtown or if you don't have, um, a really defined downtown area, you can still use this to try and incentivize, um, businesses to come into spaces of concern. Um, and the credits are available throughout calendar year 2026. So the parameters are pretty simple, um, and, and streamlined, as we mentioned. The application requires that, um, communities would identify some priority locations and, um, provide a, uh, uh, overview of how they would use their funds. It can be used for as few as one location. So if you had a large space where you wanted to use all 50,000 of the tax credits and you actually received those in the, in, through the process of applying, you could, you know, fill one really important vacant space with this program or divvy it out amongst perhaps five or 10 vacant spaces that you've prioritized during the application process. Um, the credits are only good during calendar year 2026. And the last time that any community who is in this cycle would be able to, um, make use of the tax credits or apply on behalf of a particular business would be in the December meeting of the EACC, the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, which will be the reviewing body, not for the application itself, but when you apply for tax credits. Um, recipient of tax credits can use them on personal income tax or business excise tax. That can be done however they file, whether it's quarterly or annually. Um, and they can only be used as granted by the EACC. I take that to mean that they're non-transferable. So if the business that you have applied on behalf of, um, reneges on the deal, you would not be able to just say, okay, we're going to move those over to business B. You would have to start the, um, application for tax credits over again for a, a, another business. Um, how to be competitive? So the key information that you need to be thinking about if you're going to apply for this is really tying it to your community's stated goals, whether you have a master plan, a downtown revitalization plan, if you have a cultural district, um, if there is an economic development plan, um, on the books for your community, making sure that you are demonstrating that this effort would be tied to the stated goals of your community and that the request that you're making is reasonable based on the size of your, uh, downtown or commercial area and how many vacancies you've identified that you're going to prioritize. Um, they will be looking at your ability to execute and use the tax credits within the calendar year of 2026. And so having some preliminary list of businesses that would be interested in taking advantage of this, if you were to be awarded, is probably a good idea. Um, you can work with a, a local chamber. You can work with the regional one Berkshire, uh, organization. Um, we would be happy to assist in trying to identify potential beneficiaries of, of this program if you were to go after it. There's also a consideration around your commitment of matching funds or in-kind contributions, if provided, and that's a key thing because match is no longer provided or no longer required in this program. That was a, a significant hurdle for a lot of potential applicants in the past. And, um, there are lots of ways that you can demonstrate match or potential for match without having to, um, commit cash to the program. And so I think that's another reason why this is much more, um, of a desirable and reasonable, uh, program parameter. This is the proposed timeline. Uh, I mentioned that this is part of One Stop. So the deadline for One Stop applications is in June of this year. They will not be, um, making any notification of awards until October, after several months of review. Um, but if you were to receive this, uh, grant, you would be able to begin submitting tax credit applications in November and December in order to get a jump on filling some of those vacancies with the businesses that you'd already had on your shortlist. Um, throughout 2026, you would be able to continue to do that. Uh, the EACC meets quarterly, so you would be, you know, doing this on a three-month cycle to apply for the tax credits. And, um, then in calendar year 2027 would be the last time that a business could claim the tax credit when filing. Ongoing reporting for a short time. Um, they have not been very clear about exactly what metrics they'll be using, but I do know that the businesses who, uh, benefit from this would have to make a commitment to stay in the space for 12 months minimum. This is another way of looking at the timeline. There are, there is an expression of interest, um, phase open right now. So if your community is interested in exploring this, I urge you to submit an EOI and get a sense of, um, any guidance that you can receive out of the state and then turn that into, um, an application due June 4th. Expressions of interest, by the way, are due next Wednesday. I had it in my head, it was the 28th. It's really actually two days earlier than that, unfortunately. But that is a very short form to, to submit, um, the expression of interest. And let's see, there are definitely some opportunities, uh, for more guidance. In early April, there are specific office hours about this program at noon, um, on April 7th. And that will, that webinar will, or that office hour session will strictly be about the vacant storefront program. Um, I assume that that will be, uh, operated by Emmy Han, who has been managing this program for several years and will be able to answer any questions you might have. And there are also some elements that the Executive Office of Economic Development has been focused on in, in revamping and relaunching this program. And, and those two things are, um, specifically relevant for us and our rural communities. Um, I'm going to stop sharing, but I want to continue to just run through a few notes about this. They recognized that match was a significant hurdle for a lot of communities. And in the past, um, that was either coming through, um, taxing, local tax incentives, um, cash match for, from the municipality or from a local Chamber of Commerce, um, or from significant financial, uh, commitments on the part of the, the landlord. And now the, um, sorry, I need to escape out of this. Okay. Um, the match possibilities are much broader. Um, it can of course be any of those things, but it can also be, um, rent relief or assistance with a build-out for, by the landlord or by another organization, could be a nonprofit in the region that wants to help, um, a small business launch. And we have, uh, many more of those now than we did a few years ago. So there could be contributions, whether in-kind or cash value from a small business organization or a CDC or, um, any of the small business technical assistance organizations that operate in Berkshire County. It could be that the community, um, waives permitting or licensing fees. It can be staff time or volunteer time. And I would add to this, because this is not an exclusive list, um, from the guidelines, I would also say that arranging for, um, complimentary or, uh, pro bono marketing uh, or advertising would also be, uh, an opportunity to provide in-kind match for a business that's, um, landing in a new space and trying to, to launch. Um, so I would be happy to help people brainstorm if they're looking for ways to really build, build up their, um, match commitment and make that as appealing as possible in the application process. Um, the other challenge that really had been identified by EOED that, um, I think is meaningful here especially, is the capacity to be able to operate one of these programs. Um, it is, uh, not an enormously heavy lift after you get the award to help, um, ident, to identify businesses that could move into a vacant space. or to submit the, um, application for tax credits on their behalf. Um, but it can be, uh, burdensome for a small community. So, um, we are able at VRPC to offer assistance through the application phase, um, using gap funding. And we would also be happy to, uh, provide assistance in administering a program. Uh, if, uh, if a community needed us to and asked us to, we would be able to use DLTA funds to do that. Um, and with a, a variety of other possible, uh, funding sources that we could use to make sure that, that the program was successful and the spaces were, uh, were occupied in time. So, um, I will stop there and see if there are any questions. Doug? Or I should be letting Malcolm call on you. Sorry.
That's all right. Go ahead, Laura.
Uh, Laura, you know, being from a mini-town.
Yeah.
Only thing, a lot of the little, uh, towns in, in the Berkshires have is the general store. And one of the worst things that happens to one of these towns is to lose the general store. Can you envision some town? Cause you know, you look at the Richmond general store and there, there have been many that have closed and not been replaced. Can you imagine this grant being used by a town to try to get a, a, a new entity to reopen a general store?
Yeah, I think that's a great question and the answer is yes. If a business has not existed for, and I, I'm sorry, I forget the exact amount of time, but there's, it says six months. If the business hasn't existed for six months, along with their application for tax credits, you would have to submit a business plan. In a typical application for the tax credits, for a long-established business that's just moving into a vacant space, you would not have to include a business plan, but in the instance that you're talking about, um, that would be one of the extra attachments. And I think that that would be entirely viable.
Yeah, I think, I think this is something that we want to make sure that our rural towns know about because I know they have great angst over losing their general stores.
Yeah. And I, I really appreciate the moves that they've made to make sure that it's not just communities with, you know, 10 vacant spaces in a really compact downtown. It's just not always the situation. Um, and there are plenty of, of rural communities that don't have that kind of density and might only have one or two spaces that they want to fill, but it would make an enormous difference if they could. So. Um, so I, I definitely encourage folks to take a look at it and to ask for our assistance if it's needed. Um, I get the sense from the notes that I've read and from the slides, um, that, that were presented by the state. Um, they're looking for rural wins in this new version of the program, so let's give them some.
It sounds like the, uh, the preliminary is due next week.
The expression of interest is due on Wednesday. That is an extremely concise, um, just opportunity to say, hey, we're looking at this and here's why we think it's a good fit for our town kind of thing.
Yeah, so anybody who wants to put their foot in the door should do it that way.
Well, they should. Let me just amplify that a little bit because the most successful, uh, grant awards through the community one-stop program are those that have submitted an expression of interest. So if, if, those are the ones that get funded ultimately.
So you can go through the process without?
Yes, yeah.
It's not required.
It's not required, but if you don't, your odds are not as good.
Yeah.
Roger?
I just wanted to observe that there's no provision for relief on property taxes here. And it's conceivable that if a business is reopened, its assessed value would go up and its property taxes would increase. So it's interesting, the state has, isn't offering to, to allow the, the town to lower the property taxes and then reimburse the town.
Right. Well, that would be the landlord's property tax, remember?
Yeah, well.
So, yeah, I mean.
Often the, sometimes the owner of the business will be the, the owner of the property. Uh, you know, I, I think of, you know, I mean, I'm not, it is kind of irrelevant because the plan is in, in place and engraved in stone pretty much. But I just want to remark as an economist that somebody missed the boat here, I think. It would have been nice to have a way to reduce property taxes too.
Well, but I, I'm going to disagree a little bit with your comment about written in stone. I think for this year it may be, Roger, but the, uh, the program and the program director has shown a willingness to make changes. These changes just came about this year. So that's, that's maybe an appropriate comment we want to make there.
Yeah.
Certainly for the general store thing scenario that I shared, that would be huge.
I'm sorry, say that again, Doug?
For, for the general store scenario I shared, property tax, uh, assistance would be huge.
Change, right.
Because it takes a very large amount of space to hold your inventory.
Right.
Right.
Well, and also if it were to be, um, available to a landlord who isn't the business, isn't operating the business, um, that really lights a fire on their landlords who aren't doing anything to fill space and letting it sit vacant for a long time. So that's a really interesting idea.
Kate has a question.
Yeah, just to confirm, Laura, uh, that it is vacant, that there's not a, um, there's not a prevention of loss of existing businesses option. Like if you've got a general, if you've got a business that's struggling, it's really the space, you know, has to have.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. It is strictly for spaces that have been, right, exactly.
Okay.
Um, the, it is strictly for spaces that have been vacant for at least six months. Yeah.
Another missed boat.
Maybe that's a whole other program, but yeah.
Hey, anybody else have any comments or questions?
Oh, I want to mention if your community participated in the local rapid recovery planning process a few years ago, you may already have an inventory of spaces. And it would be easy to, uh, pull that out and update it. Um, or use another community's, uh, inventory as a model. Because you could apply for this year after year and prioritize different vacancies each year.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Laura. So, uh, then, um, we will, uh, move on in the agenda to the next item, which is report and possible discussion of the executive director's report. Um, Tom, is there anything you want to highlight or?
No, it's pretty simple. It was about the open meeting law this time around and that's been hopefully, uh, addressed or mooted point at the moment.
Yeah, let's hope so. Yeah, uh, does anybody else have any final comments, uh, off the agenda? And, uh, we'll take a motion to, uh, conclude. Motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Thank you, Roger.
Second.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheila. Okay, um, Kate?
Alrighty. Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.